Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the April 7, 2025 Newburgh City Council Meeting. I call this meeting to order. Could we have roll call, please?
Counselor McBride?
Here.
Counselor Wheatley?
Here.
Counselor Jarnell Holliman?
Here.
Counselor Kilburg?
Here.
Mayor Rosacker?
Here.
Counselor Turkison?
Here.
And Counselor Carmen?
Here. Good evening, everybody. We have some honored guests with us today, some members of the Boy Scouts. They are here to, in part, earn their citizenship badge, I think. And I've asked them if they would come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on up, guys. So, the month of April is the Child Abuse Prevention Month. Juliet's House is our, what do we refer to you at? Our organization which protects, helps to protect vulnerable children in our county. So I have a proclamation. Whereas child abuse is one of our nation's most serious public health problems, with scientific studies documenting the link between the abuse of children and a wide range of medical, emotional, psychological, and behavioral disorders. Whereas it is estimated that 1 in 4 children will suffer significant abuse before the age of 18, and in fiscal year 2023, over 164,000 contacts were made to the Oregon Child Abuse Hotline. A total of 45,208 received reports were assigned for CPS assessment, and of all completed CPS assessments, 7,861 were founded for abuse, involving 11,191 victims. Whereas the physical, emotional, mental, and physical impact of abuse falls on children of all ages and abilities, who come from all economic, racial, social backgrounds, and these crimes affect many more family members, friends, and neighbors in community. Whereas effective child abuse prevention efforts succeed because of partnerships created among state and local government agencies, schools, diverse community groups, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community, while recognizing that feeling connected to community can be a protective factor against child abuse. And whereas Newburgh is dedicated to stopping child abuse, supporting survivors and their non-offending families, and working to prevent it through education, advocacy, and accessible family resources. And whereas each of us has a role to play in addressing the problem of child abuse by learning how to prevent, recognize, and report it, as well as supporting prevention, education, and empowerment programs for children and youth. Now therefore, it is proclaimed, we, the City of Newburgh Council, do hereby proclaim April 2025 to be Child Abuse Prevention Month in Newburgh, Oregon. We reaffirm Newburgh's commitment to creating a safer, healthier, and more thriving community for our children by taking proactive steps to help prevent child abuse. These include promoting awareness, encouraging citizens to learn about the signs of child abuse, and how to report suspected cases to the appropriate authorities; investing in prevention-supporting programs and initiatives that provide family resources, parenting education, and early intervention services to at-risk families; community involvement, participating in local events and promoting Wear Blue Fridays each week in April to show solidarity in preventing child abuse; strengthening partnerships, collaborating with schools, local businesses, healthcare providers, and community organizations to create a united front against child abuse; empowering action, providing free resources and training for citizens on recognizing and addressing child abuse through Juliet's House and similar organizations. Community members can learn more at www.julietshouse.org. Together, let us protect every child in our community and ensure their well-being by fostering a culture of safety, compassion, and accountability. I have heretofore set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Newburgh to be fixed on the 7th day of April 2025. Child abuse is preventable. Will, follow that, my friend. This is Deb Bridges. What is your official title now?
I'm the, I'm a program coordinator at Juliet's House.
No, I'm going to come.
The magic line.
All right, Mr. Worthy, your city manager, the report, please.
And I know I won't be able to follow that, so I'll do my best, though. Okay, these are the monthly events for the month that just ended, and that would be March of 2025. The Community Development Department, all hands were on deck while they rolled out the OpenGov software. They were doing configuration and testing with the go-live date for April 1. As it transpired, on April 1, some of the settings did not work, but they got them to work by the end of the week. So, we now have our new permit software up and running, and they're going to be doing some more testing as we go along. Vacation rentals policy update, process improvements are on schedule. The owner removed the street seats themselves from the former Riddick Wood, so that was good. And the CET grant applications were due April 1, which is now past. Public safety, officers stopped and helped to support the high school orchestra fundraiser, buying lots of baked goods. The Special Investigations Unit of the department helped the county sheriff with a search warrant, and we've got an interesting picture about that, which is quite exciting in a minute. And Officer Dickerson helped a stray dog, and officers were taking care of it. And that's very cool, because it's a cool pooch. And here is that fundraising event. And then, here is us serving the warrant. And that, and that's our MRAP going through the gate quite nicely. And here's poor old Fido, waiting for a lift. For the month of March, Finance did many things, but especially budget, budget, and more budget, including a four-year financial forecast, demonstrating that within the four-year horizon, unlike our competitors, the city's funds are solvent and secure, and none of our funds are bopping out, unlike some of our neighbors. Utility billing has begun the department customer service manual with a statistics survey. Finance and City Recorder attended the old GEC Public Meetings Law Update, and Finance in Court helped review a new red light camera request for proposal, which we are running right now to try and find a new company. Some of the finance stats, accounts payable, 1.2 millions. The electrical contract for the programmable logic controllers was our largest single item. That project is wrapping up before the end of May, so it's great to get that one finished. And of course, then it will be removed from the SDC table in 2026. The Visit Newburgh net tourism distribution. And then, one of the construction companies that worked on Wynuski Storm Outfall, which is also finished, and there's the payment for that, and that project was under budget. Payroll was 1.1 million dollars, which is pretty typical for these days.
Is the Visit Newburgh amount right, 1,041,000 for the month, or for quarter two?
It said 200, oh, wait a minute. No, that is not correct. Katie! I can't believe it. Anyway, no, that, that... I would, I would argue, I would argue that is her first mistake in life. We'll get you the right number, though. HR happenings, HR attended the annual CIS Conference in Salem. Allison was invited to participate in an HR Director's Roundtable in Tigard. A mixture of corporate and municipal HR directors were there. Running recruitments were three engineering technician, entry-level communications officer, and lateral communications officer. Hires zero, were still smarting from the separation of Clay Downing, and claims processed there were two. Over to the library, 201980s-era broken light canisters were replaced, things are brighter. The ramp at the north end is in the progress of being improved by the concrete crew. They did some work, and then they had to go back to Center Street to keep focusing on that ahead of the road improvements, but they'll be coming back to finish the ramp later. For spring break, we have a grab-and-go activity kit for kids, make, take-and-make activities for teens, and a spice kit for adults, and I have no idea what that is about, but we can ask Cory. The library's meeting room is still unusable due to the water damage, but we're moving forward with planned repairs. And it's looking like those repairs will only require some surface coats rather than structural work. So, and this is surface water from under the building, coming through the cement. Not a leak, not a pipe, it's just the way the soil is, and the building is very old. City Recorder developed the first draft of the new council rules, and a small piece of that is before you tonight. A successful records week was had, with all staff getting involved in records management activities. There was records consultation with five departments, and two staff attended the mid-year conference of the Oregon Association of Municipal Recorders. And only Rachel, only our City Recorder, would make scanning documents and turning them into digital files a fun activity for all departments. Look at that, and that's why she got 20 or 30 boxes scanned by each department, and it was fabulous. In a year and a half, our objective is to have no paper documentation left, except for a small amount of very historical documents, as you know. Community engagement with the website launch CE has been focused on resolving any technical issues that have surfaced. We're beginning to produce punchy, exciting video content about the city's own amazing team and what we do. This project, Emily called Employee Storyteller Project, will allow Newburgh to take a look at the hard work employees do behind the scenes to keep the city running smoothly. And so these are going to be short videos of the sort of, hey, what are you doing here? What's it for? What's going on? And you've probably seen a few of them released already. Here are just some of the things that Public Works maintenance did. Pipes inspected, streets swept, valves exercised, fleet equipment repaired. And the quarterly meetings, all-hands meetings have resumed. The topics for the first Public Works all-hands meeting included staffing, budgets, projects, and thinking ahead for winter response. And here are just some of the things that happened at the wastewater treatment plant. Testing, rainfall measurements, replacements to airlock doors, oil changes, lubricants, and tensioning on the conveyor belt system in the composter. And here is some of the things that were replaced or repaired recently. You can see in the water treatment plant, the settling basin flow meter filled with rust. So that stuff has to be scoured out. Foothills drive water flushing. And then, of course, the ongoing water line repairs that happen everywhere. And here are some of the things at the water treatment plant. Similar to the other section, and you did many other things, but we did annual testing on 65 city-owned backflow devices. So of course, we follow the same rules ourselves that we ask everyone else to. Cleaned and calibrated the influent water meter, repaired filters, replaced level indicators for Otis Springs, checked on the basin chlorine analyzer. Here are some more things Public Works did. Dartmouth Street service line repair, pump station repair, South Center Street service line repair. And every week, all over town, things are being fixed when the pipes have corroded or need a repair or a modification. So that is it for this month. Are there any other questions?
So Chief, on serving that warrant, I'm assuming with the armored vehicle, you guys were anticipating that there would be trouble. Is that why you guys were called in with that unit?
Yes, and it, it serves as a universal key for any gate. It will open them all. You just run over it.
So is anybody else curious as to how we clean sewer lines? No, we'll let it go. I really am curious, so I'd like to know how you do it.
Russ, could you give us a super fast how you clean sewer lines? I know how we inspect them, but I actually don't know how we clean them.
So we have a unit called a Vector, which is a manufacturer brand. We use high-velocity water jet pressure. We raise the water pressure in a hose, just like a garden hose, to 3,000 PSI. On the end of the hose, it has angled jets, and it drives it up the sewer line, and then we pull it back slowly, and it scowers the inside of the line. And then the Vector is like a giant vacuum cleaner, and it vacuums all the debris and material out of the manhole, and that way we remove it from the wastewater stream. We dispose of it at landfill and clean the pipe. And once the pipes are cleaned, then we can run our TV camera in there, which is like on a little robotic trailer, and we can TV and inspect video inspect the inside of the pipes to see what conditions they're in.
But Russ, isn't it true that if that's not done carefully, you can blow up somebody's toilet, even possibly while they're sitting on it?
Not only is it true, it's happened. And I speak from experience. One of the things that we have is the sewer laterals don't come in perpendicular to pipes. They might be angled, and if you go in the wrong direction with 3,000, imagine 3,000 PSI of water shooting up a sewer lateral. We have coated the roof of bathrooms with water out of toilets. Not intentionally, of course.
Now, if you were one of these other nearby cities that is struggling with its budget right now, that might happen in your city, but of course, it couldn't happen in Newburgh.
Well, thank you, Russ. I knew that was going to be entertaining, so I appreciate it. We have no public comments, so I'm closing public comments. And now we have our consent calendar. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that we accept the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in, all oppose? Same sign. Motion passes unanimously. New business. This is our potential sunset of 15. Am I in the right place? Yes, I am. Welcome, Katie. Good to see you.
I must have my numbers right on this one. So this one, it's pretty brief. I don't have a presentation on it or anything, but Fund 14 was originally created to host our CET funds. And then, we sort of, when we got the business license fees for economic development, which are just a really small portion of revenue, it's about $40,000 we get every year. That also goes into Fund 14. So now that we don't have CET funds coming in anymore, we were kind of bouncing around. Why do we even need Fund 14 anymore? So I want, because Fund 14 was originally set up by council, so you guys would have to get rid of it also through a resolution. So my proposal was to move the small amount of economic development money that we get from the business licenses to the general fund, so that no new revenue is coming into Fund 14, so that we can sunset it after this next budget cycle once we get all of the CET money distributed and the affordable housing money distributed. And then we can hopefully close that fund after this next budget cycle. And then if we have any additional economic development, we can put that in the general fund, because the planning department is who would usually manage that anyway, and they're housed in the general fund also. And that's pretty much my whole presentation. Pretty simple.
So I'm reading over real quick. Are you wanting us to approve this ordinance to allow that to happen? Is that?
Yeah, it's a resolution, just to approve that we could
Resolution, thank you.
Move the business license fees to the general fund and then close out eventually Fund 14, because no new revenue will be coming in, so it'll just sunset eventually.
All right, would anybody like to make a motion? Peggy?
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2025-3968.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution Number 2025-3968. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign. That motion passes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So, that is Will. So Will, you're going to talk to us about the possibility of removing a semi-permanent street closure on a junction of East Illinois and Main Street.
Yes, sir. Honorable Mayor and Council, we are going to be considering the emotion, seeking council approval of a semi-permanent street closure. But since this is the first time this matter has been brought forth, given our precedent that we have for always having two readings of any new item, you could, of course, decide to have it be brought back for more time to consider next time, if that's what you'd like to do. So let's lean into this. The problem, for many years, residents living on Main Street and East Illinois have fielded complaints to the Traffic Safety Commission or to the City Engineering Department about the challenges of that particular junction being very short. This being the intersection between Main and the 240 State Highway. While there have been many near misses recorded at the intersection, there have been very few actual crashes at the location. And on the next slide, I'll show you the area in question and the recent crash data. And there we go. The key issue is the difficulty to navigate the junction of these three roads. When traffic backs up, folk take chances, and the southbound drivers, as they approach the state highway, need to crane their neck or left over their shoulder. It's very hard for cars to zipper in, because there's just not enough length there. So that's the challenge. There have been a handful of crashes in the listed years and no fatalities. As a further example, in the packet, I included some of the Traffic Safety Commission logs about this problematic intersection, which was attachment one to this item. In 2024, a technical memorandum was created by Kittleson and Associates engineers. And as you see, the memorandum concluded that the conditions were not meeting the city's performance target. The line-of-sight issue was rated as an F, which means extremely poor line-of-sight. During the peak hours, drivers were experiencing the highest delays on the southbound stop-controlled approach. Kittleson went on to say, there's a lack of accessible crosswalks or other improvements in the area. And the next step in the project would include preparing design alternatives for North Main Street slash Illinois Street intersection, and evaluating no-build-and-build scenarios under the future year 2043 traffic condition. Now, we didn't do that. What we did instead is, we had a look at this from a very sober reflection on the transportation budget. And so that led us to not do the study. The reason is, while the study may well have indicated that a road-realignment would be the best solution, or a roundabout, or a signalized intersection, this is, however, ODOT right-of-way. And ODOT has told the city, both informally and officially, that they do not have money for signalized intersections, even on worse spots for accidents like Everest, where there are far more crashes. A road-realignment would have necessitated removing a house, and so would a roundabout. There's not enough width even for a mini roundabout for these roads to come together here. Definitely north of $500,000 for the roadwork, probably a lot more, actually. And the cost to buy and tear down a house, probably another half a million dollars. The most likely house to be removed would be older homes in the area. This may trigger historic review with ODOT involvement. Neither the city nor ODOT has the funds to do this major engineering at this site, and ODOT could not pay for signalization. Therefore, the $100,000 or more for the engineering study was saved. What then can we do? The Honorable Mayor Rosacker suggested the concept of simply closing off East Illinois at the intersection with Main to solve the problem. This would mean that southbound drivers on Main would only have to look left and right on 240, not left, right, and left again, over their shoulder. It would also take away the problem of traffic blending together in a queue, what my wife calls the zipper, which she says people in Oregon don't know how to do properly anyway. The city admin team loved this idea, but other projects had to take precedence. So it wasn't until early 2025 that we had the time to go out and test this idea with the general public. And if this were to happen, that's the location where the proposed closure would occur, to simplify the traffic pattern. And then, local resident engagement. Two types of engagement was followed with local residents who would be most directly impacted by the closure. Those who would need to make one extra turn in order to get to Highway 240. This included a door-to-door invitation to an open house, as well as a digital survey option. All residents who exit from the end of East Illinois were surveyed, and some of the houses on the other side in North Washington Street, just to be sure. So that's our survey area that we went round door-to-door, and we gave out digital engagement. In person, five parties came to the open house, and all were in favor of street closure. Online, a slightly different position. 15 people responded out of 22 who received mailers and responded to the digital survey. 12 were for the proposal, including responses from people who also intended in person. So we've only accounted for their support once to avoid a double count. And there were five against. So we've only accounted for their support once to avoid a double count. And there were five against. So overall, out of the twenty-odd surveyed, there was five against. Other, some supported the barrier, but wanted to revisit the look of the barrier to make sure it was aesthetically pleasing. In summary, seventy-eight percent were in favor of the measure with twenty-two percent proposing other sorts of ideas. Some residents wanted as an alternative to close off the left turn from two forty onto Illinois Main altogether. But this would not be possible without ODOT approval, which is unlikely. And I feel that this might be even more unpopular with pass-through drivers. Some suggested putting a stop sign back on Main in its previous location. Several surveyed residents within the intersection vicinity talked more generally about their concern. For motorists and pedestrians. The survey received substantial support to close the intersection with the positive commenters mentioning. Increased volumes of traffic flow, high-speed drivers, large trucks traveling from two forty or off of Main Street. And a prevalent series of comments about visibility and confusion on how to get into the traffic flow. What you would expect. So then we looked at that data and we said, okay, how will business be impacted? So we looked at the street to see if anyone was operating heavy goods vehicles. That would possibly use that intersection because we don't want to have an impact on a business. Now, I visited the operations and H R staff from P P M Technologies on East Illinois. This firm is the only industrial operation on the street that has heavy goods vehicles, like long-bodied trucks and such. I asked if the freight traffic would be impacted by such a proposed road closure. Eddie, full last name withheld for his privacy because I didn't ask him for a release. The Director of Supply Chain Management stated that it was their policy that their freight carriers do not use that intersection at all. To access the state highway. He remarked that it would be unsafe for a long freight vehicle to try to make that tight turn through that junction. And it would assist with their safe driving policy if there was no such option. Based upon the majority opinion of residents and the Traffic Safety Commission and Kittleson data. Staff would like a motion to proceed with closing this intersection. With such a motion, the next steps would include outreach to T V F N R, to waste management. And finding a construction company to do something pleasant. It might be an attractive-looking gate. It might be some planters with some nice trees in them, something that would look aesthetically pleasant. The likely cost of this solution would be in the fifteen to twenty thousand dollar range. Yes, it's in the C I P already. We have the money. It's within my expenditure limit. But it did seem like something fairly significant, so I wanted to bring this to council. Lastly, as I mentioned at the beginning, this is a new matter, so per our council transparency guidelines. We should bring it back for another examination at the next session, if that's what council decides to do. Of course, you could pass the motion tonight, since many of the critical stakeholders already know about this move. And further outreach to sister agencies will and must occur. Alternatively, since community opinion is not unanimous. The council could decide to direct staff to not pursue this matter any further. So those are the options. And there are the questions. And that is the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Will. Are there any questions for Will? Robin?
Uh, thanks. Well, what were the people, what were the people that were against it? What was their issue with it? The five people, it looks like. What didn't they like?
So there were some of the, some of the comments were fears of aesthetic issues. Some were suggesting an alternative of changing the, the traffic completely. And causing the, causing the junction with two forty to operate in. Can you remember exactly what the wording was? It was one-way, one-way in the street as it joins.
There were some thoughts about making it one-way, but a lot of it was asking ODOT to just, uh, close any turnoffs from two forty. So they suggested even just closing off Main Street there. Um, that would close off a lot of the neighborhoods up there, though.
That would be the same effect, except shift it further to the south. And it would also inconvenience a lot more drivers who go southbound down Main. So I don't think that's a viable thing because I don't think ODOT would say yes to that anyway.
So would you, how does council want to proceed? Shall we discuss this some?
I was just gonna ask, um, if you couldn't get out from Illinois to Main, is there a quick route around it? I didn't.
Yeah, you'll go left one block on, that's North Street, is it? No. Yeah, you'll turn left at the intersection, go one block, turn right and then enter, uh, Main Street at a perpendicular location. This is a. If you, if you'll recall, a year ago, we authorized. Uh, the, the staff to spend a lot of money to hire a consultant to come in and direct. This project. And it was, uh, was it, it was a hundred thousand dollars, wasn't it, Will?
Yes.
So, um. The problem with that intersection is, uh, people going westbound on Illinois Street. They don't respect the people coming off of Main Street, uh, or coming directly north on Main Street. A lot of drivers seem to think that the people coming off of the highway are gonna stop at that intersection. Um, it was interesting Friday, uh, toward the end of day, I was coming to City Hall, southbound on Main Street. And to the left of me on Illinois was a pickup hauling a trailer. And you know how people are in that intersection. He, he, I had people behind me, so he wanted to make sure that he didn't get skipped. So as soon as I got up to the stop, then he pulled in behind me, therefore blocking Main Street going north. There happened to be a school bus turning off of the highway on the Main Street or going, going north on that. The school bus fortunately stopped and the vehicle behind them stopped. And we were, we were dead in the water. There was, I had to make a very dangerous decision to go around those vehicles. When I couldn't see what was behind them. Uh, so I think this is, in my opinion, is something we really need to do.
To, to answer the question a little bit further, because this thing has a cool laser on it. So I'm gonna point over here at this one, so I don't have any lasers in people's eyes. So if the, if this is blocked here with a semi-permanent barrier. The people impacted are these houses that come off of these side roads. The people who live over here, although we did survey them, they're not really impacted because they just come down and join it here. If the people here, if it becomes a cul-de-sac, instead of going through this intersection. They would drive along here and down and join the road over here. Yeah, that's right.
Jerry?
I know you're gonna ask T V F N R, but I was curious, like Chief Cosmic, do you have any concerns from like a timeliness of police response if there's a crisis? With this change?
Uh, I don't. Um, we have North College, uh, and then we have Washington. We're usually pretty, uh, adept at going around things. We're driving all the time. I would not be supportive of blocking anything north on Main Street for us to get to. That's a pretty big arterial for us. And one of the other things I like about this is Will has proposed that it's, uh, not necessarily, not necessarily permanent. So if there is or becomes a big issue, we can always, for very little money, we can try this out. Uh, Illinois in that stretch between Main and College seems to be kind of a raceway. Of course, when we sit there, no one speeds. When we leave, people speed. And so we've put the trailer up there. We've tried to put un- unmarked cars up there. You, you can, you can get forties and forty-fives on that stretch in front of that industrial area and it's really. I, I'm for this to at least try it. Let's see what happens. It's a very low, uh, cost. That would, I, I think it'll help that intersection because as the mayor said, it's only dangerous when you start getting a lot of traffic.
I live near, fairly close to this intersection, use it quite a bit, and I think this is an excellent idea. The in, I mean, the street will become more quiet, Illinois. Um, and you can just go up Washington to hit Hancock or turn right on north and get back on two forty. I don't, I mean, yeah, two forty. I just don't think it's a big inconvenience. I would think the people who live on Illinois would love it. Because it'll be a quieter street. So I'm totally supportive of this.
So would anybody like to make a motion, or we can just table it till next week and bring it back up at that point? Robin?
I'll make a motion. Um, I move that staff are granted permission to work on a semi-permanent street closure at East Illinois and Main Street. In the interest of traffic safety. Second thought.
It has been moved and seconded. Uh, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, same sign. Here you go. Will, you have the floor, hun.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. This one is only an informational item. It's a discussion about River Street. And it's really just to share with council what the Nura Community Advisory Committee has, um. Decided in their meeting. And so bring everyone up to date on that. So, the, in the packet tonight, I included the information that was forwarded. On River Street to the Nura group. And this is really just to cover, there was a few decision points that we brought to the C A C. Should the city choose the north-to-south or south-to-north approach for River Street? Should the city do further public engagement testing beyond the vast amount that has already been done, as you know, when Nura was established? Should the city test this with a town hall or in-person event or survey? And these questions came from the context of the current Nura plan and focused upon the question. What River Street sections should be tackled in what order? Now, as council saw in its packet, and indeed as council knows very well, from having seen this material get a time and again. There are three possible River Street projects involving road sections. And then in the south, some other sorts of improvements, including railway crossing improvements. So, the Nura C A C members deliberated this in very short order. The C A C members felt that the city should focus on the northern sections. And in particular, from eleventh northbound up to third. So not the direction I was imagining. They imagined the repairs going the other way. And Mr. Tol spoke, spoke eloquently about the dangers of building southern River Streets adjacent infrastructure. That's the southern section before anyone really knows whether the mill site operator of the future. Would want a rail spur in the first place. In other words, the potential risk of doing a railway im- improvement and crossing improvement. When it may turn out that that is not needed by that industry. So the Nura C A C recommended that there was no need for any further public engagement. Beyond the many, many meetings that have already happened over the last five years to get Nura going in the first place. They also recommended this would be the course of action. That we should come back and put this formally before Nura and formally before council at a later date. To see if, if this would be acceptable. So really, as I say, all I'm doing this evening is letting you folks know this was what they thought. And curious to just hear the opinions of Nura or council. On, does this sound like a reasonable course of action? Because what we would do next is if, if there's no groundswell of opinion on Nura or the council. That we shouldn't do this, we would next seek some assistance from Miller Nash. In the drafting of an intergovernmental agreement that would start to codify that relationship. As being the one that would generate the revenue to do this very first thing that Nura ever does. Which is to work on that section of River Street. So introducing the concept, there was a small amount of information in the packet. It's drawn straight, mostly straight from the Nura plan. And if there are any questions, I was at the meeting and I would love to answer them. And I'm also just curious to get the head nod, you know, is this seem like something? That you guys think that we should go with Nura's concept, in which case we'll start doing a whole bunch of work.
So we would be going from eleventh street north all the way up to third street, which I, unless we could. Get the railroad company, they still own that, the tracks and that right of way through there. If, if they're not gonna pay for any of that crossing, then it seems logical to me just to go from eleventh north to third, I think. Just go, that, in my opinion, is we go with that plan unless the railroad's gonna help pay for some of it. I happen to know that railroads don't pay for street crossings. I, uh, I thought Jim Tol was very eloquent. I agree with everything he said. Um, I would have envisioned going from the north to the south, but I'm, but I'm ambivalent. Either way works for me. Go ahead, Mike.
I mean, if you look at the road, most of, most of the, uh, the ruts and, and potholes are. I think between about ninth street and third street in that section anyways. So we might as well, I think, go from eleventh to third street and just, that's the majority of the damaged road. Just get it done.
Yeah, Mr. Tol also recognized that by focusing on the section that was more conventional. We might make our dollar stretch a little further too.
Elise?
Can I ask what Russ thinks?
Well, my personal opinion, and I'd also previously had this conversation with Mr. Tol. Um, going from eleventh to the north makes sense. Uh, for those that don't know, River Street was previously constructed using a concrete base. So there's about a six-inch concrete base in portions of that road. That road has been cut multiple times for water lines and sewer lines. And so it no longer has a, a strategic so- solid base due to those cuts. Now, they've compacted the rock, but yet that's what's created the unevenness, the potholing, uh. The rough road conditions. So working from that, that southern portion towards the north would take care of the worst sections. Because from eleventh north to fourth is where the majority of the cuts have happened. And the majority of the cuts happened in that section from eleventh to ninth and eleventh to sixth. So that's the most damaged section of the subgrade of that road. Uh, and it makes, it makes sense to do that because it, it has been compromised. Uh, to get that reconstructed and should further construction happen to the south of eleventh street. For the waterfront development, that would have that road prepared and in condition to handle construction. Rather than further deterioration of that road.
I believe Honorable Mayor got the thumbs up to begin some legal stuff.
All right, now it's time for the council rules discussion. All right, it's almost seven o'clock, so why don't we go ahead and take a quick break? Uh, let's take five minutes or so and give regular time to get ready for us. All right, shall we resume? Gary? You cleared the room out, Rachel. Good job.
All right, well, thank you for letting me come tonight. So as you know, last fall, you asked us to start revising the council rules. This was in order to incorporate some of the practices that have fallen into place, some of the new policies and preferences, and updates, update some of the outdated things in our council rules. We also want to simplify, simplify and clarify a lot of the rules. So I've begun working on this and I have a full draft. What is before you tonight, though, is just the first three chapters. The idea is we'll bring sections of, to you at a time so that we can talk about that chunk. I can get all of your feedback and any changes that Council would like to make. When we've received all that feedback, staff will make the changes. It will go for legal review and then we'll bring a finalized version or other drafts to Council as needed. So this might take a few meetings, but hopefully we'll have a nice product. So a little bit about how I went about this. One thing, many of you have noticed, there's no red line version. We did not take the old version and cross things out and add new things. We instead thought we need to basically scrap this and start with the League of Oregon Cities model rules. So we started with that. Then I took the old council rules to make sure that all powers and permissions were pretty much the same. I don't think there's any major changes at all. And I made sure to adapt everything for the city of Newburgh. Then I checked across, checked things against state law and our code and our charter to make sure that they were congruent. The other thing we've done with this is we are making it work for both Council and the committees and commissions. Right now, committees, boards, committees and commissions have a nearly identical document to council rules with just a few of their changes. Made sense to me to combine the two documents to make sure that our processes are the same. This simplifies a lot of our backend processes and staff understanding. Another thing, so I took care of that. Another thing I've done is I got feedback from all of your department heads. So they have taken a look at this, given feedback, given input into what it is. So today we have chapters one through three. So this is general government, governance, apparently. And then it goes into communications, how your agendas run. We'll go into meeting time, location and frequency. And the last thing is ordinances and resolutions. Now, while I, I would love to hear any thoughts, ideas, feedback that Council has on this. There are some things that we'll have to refer back to state law and our own charter for. So there might be things I'll be able to answer tonight. There might be other things that I'll have to say. I will look that up and get back to you. But that's my introduction. So we can just start right at the top and look at the rules of procedure, chapter one, item one, and any feedback anyone has. I'd love to hear it. I actually don't have them, but I can pull them up. You want to see them up there? Or if you have?
The alternative would be that if we, if we each did it in our own time and then sent you our suggested changes, then we could come back at the next meeting and just go over them.
We can always do that. There may be some items I can anticipate you'd want to discuss with one another. Would you like a chance to do that or would you rather review and come back at the next meeting and? That's my only thought.
I myself, I would prefer to have the entire document.
Mm-hmm.
Go over it like you, like you broke it down into smaller pieces. But that way I can set the old document and the new document side by side. Because it's, like you say, it's not an even switch. But I just would like to verify that the things in the other, not that you're not doing.
Oh, I know.
You are. But that's what I would prefer to.
All right. So hearing that, it sounds like what we'll do is put it on the agenda again for the next meeting and then put the entire draft in there for now. And then have you all email me your feedback throughout the week and I can bring all those feedback items and we can discuss them at that meeting. Does that sound like what you prefer? Okay, we will do it that way. Thank you very much.
Bob Woodward, come on up. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Bob Woodruff. I am the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission and I'm here tonight to present our six-year plan that we have been working on. So I've been with the Historic Preservation Commission just about a year now, roughly. And we've undergone a lot of changes, both in our staff liaisons, in our committee makeup. And so the past several meetings, we really focused on kind of recalibrating ourselves, coming up with, with goals and coming up with a good, strong six-year work plan. You know, the, over the past several meetings, half a year or so, Clay Downing has been our point person. As you know, he's moved on. Rachel has been our other staff liaison. Might be unique in Oregon in having our city reporter as the liaison to our Historic Preservation Commission. That's not a typical working operation, but because of her strong knowledge and expertise, it made sense. And I understand as things get reshuffled with Clay's departure, she might not be a direct staff liaison for us anymore, but she'll of course be a resource and information bank for us to draw on. So if you go to the next slide, we identified two primary goals, two big categories that the, the committee wanted to have as our primary goals. One is preserving historic structures, the, the physical buildings and structures around town. And the other is preserving the human histories, the, the people that have lived here and the stories that there are to tell about those people. So in the historic structures, we broke that down into smaller bits. You know, we want to update the historic inventory. Our historic inventory of buildings hasn't been done since nineteen ninety-something. It's very outdated. So we've got a really strong, committed bunch of volunteers working on the commission right now. We've assigned ourselves to go through, take that nineteen ninety-ish historic inventory and just verify whether things are still there, whether they've been modified. So we've broken it up among ourselves just to update and give us kind of a ballpark of where we're at. We also have a goal of collaborating with local organizations for building restorations. You know, trying to encourage and support any property owner in town in preserving and protecting their, the historic structures that they, they own. We've talked about exploring historic downtown designation, whether it would make sense for Newburgh to designate a historic district downtown and whether, what shape that would take if we were to do that. So that's something that's a several-year process, but that we've started discussing what the, the path and the merits of that might be. One of my personal goals that I would love to see is developing an awards program, kind of a carrot to encourage folks to participate. I lived in Charleston, South Carolina for eight years. And if you've ever been or know much about Charleston, if you, Charleston's a peninsula and I lived downtown on the peninsula and I could walk eight, twelve blocks and there wasn't a house that was newer than a hundred years old. They have a very strong historic preservation program. Its flavor wouldn't work in Newburgh. We wouldn't want the strict rules that they have. But they also have a really strong, it's called the Carolopolis Award. And it's a very prestigious award that folks can put on the side of their house if they've done a renovation, if they've done a preservation effort. There are different categories for, for that award and ways to encourage folks to, to protect the, the history of town. And then facilitating funding mechanisms. This is one, that's a personal challenge I've put to myself right now, being new. Somebody owns a historic house, a historic business property. They want to get help with renovating that. I don't personally know like where to send them to get that support. So I want to learn more and we as a committee have just talked about learning more about educating ourselves so that we can be a better resource for, for building owners in town. And then the, the other side is the human histories, you know, the people that have lived here. And we really want to, you know, get those stories out and create a communication and education plan. Talk about what it might be like, whether that's articles in that we write for Newsberg or something on our website, you know, what flavor that might take, we don't know. But we've, we've put a goal for ourselves to create a communication and education plan to teach people about, more about the, the history of Newburgh. Collecting oral histories, getting the, the memories of folks who've lived in town. One of the things I'm real excited about is that there's going to be a group from George Fox who will have a booth at the Old Fashion Festival this year. And they'll have podcasting equipment set up where they'll take oral histories of folks who've lived in town for a long time to share their memories and their, their recollections of the history of Newburgh, which will be a really, a really fun, to see what, what that produces. And then we understand that it's a very long-term goal, but we want to keep it kind of on, on the, the minds of folks that it'd be wonderful to establish a museum, to have a physical space where folks could go and learn and enjoy finding out more about the history of, of Newburgh. For secondary goals, we, we have historic homes. We want to do more to try and recognize and support the, the historic homes that are in town. We want to create an inventory of cultural and natural historic resources. We focus a lot on buildings, but we also want to talk about the, the cultural resources of town, you know, things like the Camellia Festival, things like the Old Fashion Festival that are a big part of the culture of Newburgh. And then of course, natural things like big old trees and historic camellias and, you know, recognizing those and trying to inventory and do what we can to help support folks in maintaining those. Telling untold stories that haven't gotten out and aren't as well-known. I just recently learned that there was for a time a Chinese encampment up on Parrot Mountain at what is now Riley Park. You know, the history of the first self-cleaning house is another little bit of Newburgh history that isn't as well-known as it could be. And we want to try and get out those untold stories. So then in our proposed six-year certified local government grant cycle and it's still, the certified local government is still an odd term to me, but that's the term that the, the funding system uses for, for historic preservation. The first year is kind of a preparation, not kind of, the first year is a preparation year where we plan and prepare for grant applications and we conduct that review of the historic properties that the committee is undertaking. And then the, the second year, after we've kind of done our kind of overview, after we have done our overview of the historic properties, getting a grant to do a full historic property inventory. That would be done by professionals who had deeper knowledge than us, but could, you know, speed up the process. If we already knew that there were some buildings that weren't there, we could help move their, their process along and maximize the value of that, that grant. Year three, we look to complete historic property inventory and identify buildings in need. You know, that's another thing, as part of our education plan, kind of having a, a, a way to identify at-risk buildings that are in, on the edge of, of being lost to, to, whether it's from, you know, age or change, just identifying where our, our challenges are. And year four, getting a grant to explore that historic downtown designation, having a consultant come in who can help us do meetings, consultations, town halls to discuss, as I said, does it make sense for Newburgh to designate a downtown district? Have an historic district. It may, it may well, you know, my knee-jerk reaction, of course, I love historic preservation, is that it could be really good for tourism. It could be really good for maintaining the small-town feel that we all really strive to do. But having somebody come in and really help us explore it, is that the right path for us? And if it is, what would that historic district, district look like in Newburgh? You know, we wouldn't want to do it, as I said, the same way. As wonderful as Charleston is, their rules are very prohibitive and very strict and we, I would never advocate for Newburgh to have something similar. It wouldn't make sense for us as a town. Year five, pursuing that historic downtown designation with the, under the condition that Council approves that and is supportive of moving forward with that. Developing historic restoration program. And then year six, get a grant to begin the historic restoration awards program where we can recognize and reward folks who've done efforts to, to renovate and restore historic buildings. I want to thank you all for having a very efficient meeting tonight. So I tried to make that equally efficient. And if you've got any, any questions, just feel free to ask.
This, this, this isn't a question, but this is really impressive. Lots of, you could tell lots of thought and planning went into it. It'd be wonderful for Newburgh.
As, as I said, we've got a really reinvigorated group of volunteers and then we've had great staff support.
Yeah, I can see a lot of thoughts gone into this and, and I like this idea. The museum, I would love to see a museum. George Fox has a pretty good museum of, of a lot of things that have happened here in Newburgh and, but there's a lot more. I mean, the self-cleaning house, I know exactly all about that. And the lady, there was a lady that lived in that house beforehand. And so, yeah, that, this, there's some really good ideas here. Did a good job.
And I'll just add, you know, on that museum idea, I, I try and be not locked into a museum as this standalone building that, you know, you go to. It, it might be something where it's a partnership with George Fox. It's a partnership with the library. It's partnership, you know, there's a lot of forms it could take. It doesn't necessarily need to be a Smithsonian museum. Thank you.
Bob, thank you. We're all looking forward to working with you in the future on this.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Will, do you have anything that you want to bring up?
The only thing was for that, for that last item, it looked like they were actually seeking a formal motion of approval. Is, is that okay, Honorable Mr. Mayor? I think that's. Did I get that right, Rachel?
Yep. Staff was seeking a motion to approve the six-year work plan of the Historic Preservation Commission. Do you not have that RCA?
All right. I don't have the page. Mike, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I move that we go ahead and recommend a motion to approve the six-year work plan that the Historic Preservation Commission just presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to encourage the Historic Preservation Committee to do their work. All in, is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Will. Well, do any of the councilors have committees that they have been working with the last couple of weeks that they would like to report on? I swear we are going to make this an official part of our, our, our council moving forward. But yes, please, Elise.
I can give up just kudos to the Chamber, the Chamber Gala that happened last week or the week before. And I feel like this, there's a pretty good group of business leaders and community leaders that are on the Chamber Board right now and the Exec Committee and kind of getting in a groove and talking about strategic planning. And I think that although a difficult conversation over the last few months with TLT, I think that it was a, a good exercise for the Chamber and Downtown Coalition as well to get some strategy and what the future of the next five years looks like for the organization. So I think it's, I think it's a good thing. And some new members and same with NDC. NDC has been recruiting additional downtown business owners and it seems to be a pretty energetic group. And a lot going on with the Public Arts Committee. And Kate is now stepping in as the interim full-time executive director, which is exciting. So, and Brandon will still be. So, and Brandon will still be on the board, but not in a paid capacity.
I've been working with the Wine Committee, Wine Industry Committee meeting. And we've uh, we had a, a bit of an epiphany. I should say David Adelscham had a bit of an epiphany. Uh, and realized that this needs to be a wine industry-led group. So we are working, doing more work on their goals, the things that they want to accomplish. But what we're trying to make this is uh, for them to direct their own future. Come to us and tell us what they would like or how they, how they would like to assist us and work with us. Uh, it's been a very good experience. Uh, anything to add? I know Elise and Robin have been coming as well. Robin?
Yeah, I think we talked about them being on, or the people involved in the wineries, them being on some of our committees, getting them more involved in city politics. I think that was a big thing and I, um, they don't all, it seems like there was a barrier where they didn't really understand how city politics worked. And so, yeah, there's been this, you know, the wine industry and then there's the city and they wanted to work, you know, work with us, but not really understanding it. So we decided, you know, if they were on some committees and they would, that would help.
The only thing I would add is that um, I think that it's, this is not obviously the first time any of us have heard what was shared around just who to contact, what organizations are responsible for what um, piece of the puzzle. And um, so I know um, City Manager Worthy um, has already previously created really an infographic to say who's, oh, you know, this is the, this is Taste Newburgh, this is Downtown Coalition. So that people, different industries know who the point of contacts are for what body of work. So I think resurrecting or, you know, revamping that document um, will be helpful for the ad hoc committee too, to just share with their industry partners. Um, and the other thing that I think was talked about a couple of times, which um, is probably too soon for prime time to discuss, but is just having some branding, more branding within the city around Newburgh being the heart of wine country or whatever phrase they, they determine. And I, I think that's exciting and hopeful. Yeah.
One of the super amazing things that Poysdorf does so well is it has uh, its wine industry stuff on buildings. The individual owners paint the wine, I believe it's a wine bottle. Yes, it's a wine bottle, I think. It's not a cup or a glass, it's a bottle. And a business owner can paint it any way they want that fits the style of their business. They can put words on it or not have words on it, but the shape is recognizable. So you walk through Poysdorf, you have this experience of it's all that wine country thing. So if we could do something like that, that would be amazing.
I like that idea. Um, and if you've got some photos, I would love to see some photos or bring them to the council to pass out sometime. I think that is a really cool idea. I mean, I mean, really, I mean, you, you look at like Leavenworth, Washington. You know, that's a really cool place to go and it's all, the buildings are, are painted, they're, they're remodeled to look like German Bavarian, you know, architecture and stuff like that. That, so I like, I mean, this is wine country here. We're right in the, beginning, the middle of it here. I think that could set us apart. I like that idea.
All right. Well, that sounds like we've had a meeting. So this meeting's adjourned.